At 6:00 PM, time to convene the regular meeting of the Sampson County Board of Commissioners for September 12th, 2022. At this time, I will turn the meeting over to Vice Chair Kivitt.
Good evening. Glad to have everyone with us. We are honored tonight to have Boy Scout Troop 27 with us, and Mr. Brady Warren is going to do our invocation, so we'll call upon him now.
Fireheads. Dear Heavenly Father, we pause now to thank you for your mercy and grace and for your Son, Jesus Christ. We ask you that you protect our schools and communities. Also, Father, please guide this board and conduct the business of Sampson County. In Jesus' name, amen.
Amen.
Thank you. And at this time, we'll call on the Troop 27 to lead us in the pledge. So everyone, please stand.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you very much.
I really appreciate that, guys. My grandson is a part of this troop. He's at a soccer game and is not here tonight. Really proud of these guys. At this time, we will have Ms. Michelle Lance to come forward, and we'll open a public hearing.
Good evening. The first request we have this evening, R. 2206, is a rezone request to rezone 2.27 acres of an existing 4.62 acre parcel ID number 1701658501, from residential agricultural to commercial. Retz and Companies has applied on behalf of the property owners, E.E. Wells LLC. This parcel is served by County Water and Individual Septic System. The land use plan classifies the parcel as being within the residential agricultural category. The parcel has direct frontage on two main thoroughfares, US 421 and NC 903. At the August 8th meeting, the planning board voted unanimously to recommend approval of the rezoning request based on the fact they found it to be consistent with the land use plan, as well as positively align with the main purpose and intent of the residential growth category. If there are any questions, I'll answer those at this time.
And, Madam Chair, that's the one, the information in the staff report is correct. The approval resolution and denial resolution, it incorrectly said from residential to commercial. It's residential agricultural to commercial, and it's in the rural residential agricultural area. So you have a revised resolution in front of you that makes that correction.
Okay, thank you. Correction accepted. Any questions?
Close.
No one from the audience has signed up to speak. Is anybody want to say anything about this matter? No, we'll close the public hearing.
Madam Chair, I move that we adopt the resolution approving R. 22-06, having found it proposed rezoning consistent with Sampson County land use plan.
Do I have a second? All in favor? Shows unanimous. Thank you.
Okay, the next request we have is R.
Let me open a public hearing.
I apologize.
That's okay.
R. 2207, a request to rezon parcel 14095282001. This is a 1.3 acre from mixed residential to commercial. College Street Properties LLC has applied on behalf of the property owner, Robert Daniels. The land use plan classifies the parcel as being within the residential growth category. The 1.13 acre site is currently occupied by a vacant single-story structure. The parcel is served by County Water and Individual Septic System. The parcel has direct frontage on Plainview Highway. At the August 8th meeting, the planning board voted to recommend approval of the rezoning request based on the fact they found the request to be consistent with the land use plan, and due to the property's location on Plainview Highway, a major thoroughfare. If there are any questions, I'll answer those at this time.
Again, no one in the audience signed up to speak on this matter, but I will give an opportunity now if anyone wants to make a comment. If not, we'll close the public hearing. Do I have a motion?
I make a motion that we approve this rezoning.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor? Shows unanimous. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Moving on, let me open a public hearing for this.
Good evening, Madam Chair and Commissioners. I am before you tonight representing the Sampson County Economic Development Commission. Since early spring of this year, our team has been working closely with a project called Project Steel. Since that time, we've been working with the company, owners of the company. The company operates as NC Welding LLC, and they currently have operations in both Spivey's Corner and at a lease facility in Roseboro. The company is engaged in the business of buying and dismantling stadium bleachers and seating across the United States. They then repurpose and sell to other venues in the U.S., including racetracks, recreation departments, college universities, and others needing stadium seating. For example, they tore down the Daytona Speedway seating and repurposed all that. That's kind of what they do. This is an expansion project. NC Welding currently has 20 subcontractors. They plan to bring their existing manufacturing to Roseboro, which currently includes six employees. They expect to add up to 10 employees at this location within the next year to year and one half. The project is the support of Mayor Butler with the town of Roseboro. It is recommended that Sampson County sell this property, the former Blue Diamond Facility, to NC Welding for $375,000 as is. As a side note, the county is retaining approximately three acres of the property that will be used for the erection of an elevated water tank to service western Sampson County and its customer, water customers. With this sale, the county will see a full return of the county's investment, including acquisition costs, due diligence, environmental, and cleanup that occurred over the past year and a half. They're currently, the company currently plans to refurbish the existing office building for their corporate headquarters.
Attorney Starling, do you have anything to add to that?
Yeah, one thing real quick. As a result of the survey and some review of the property lines there, representation 8B and C about encroachments, there is technically an encroachment of a shed on one of the property lines, and we're going to modify that language a little bit to clarify that the existing setbacks are okay to the extent that it keeps its non-conforming status, but otherwise it's ready for approval. Just want to be transparent about those modifications.
No one has signed up to speak, but is there anyone in the audience that has a comment on this matter?
Madam Chairperson, the board does have a letter of support on page 58 of your agenda from the mayor.
Thank you. I'll close the public hearing, and I move that we adopt the enclosed resolution approving the conveyance of property and authorizing execution of an agreement of purchase and sale substantially similar to the one including the agenda and the deed. Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor? Shows unanimous. Okay, moving on, we're going to have a public hearing, and Mr. David Clark will be in charge of this one.
Yes, the budget amendment includes an increase to the economic development budget for, one being for funds that were obligated last year to do due diligence for a land purchase in the amount of $48,650. The other is the budget of unspent grant funds for the North Carolina Department of Commerce in the amount of $815,989. This is for work out at the southeast industrial park on infrastructure. The final amount of $174,423 is the remaining unspent amount of a building reuse grant, and this is a grant to Garland Apparel.
Again, no one in the audience signed up to speak on this. Is there anyone that needs to make a comment or choose to make a comment? If not, close the public hearing.
Madam Chair, I move we approve the amendment for the economic development budget as requested.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor? Shows unanimous. Thank you very much, Mr. Clark. Okay, moving on, Attorney Starling, if you will address the update on the airport hangar.
Thank you. We had noticed this originally for the August meeting. This is for a lease, for a hangar that the Lessey is going to construct at his expense on airport property. Due to some changes in the rent terms of that, we felt that it was appropriate to do a new notice for that. That was run on October, I'm sorry, August 31st, so this will be addressed at the October 3rd Commissioners Meeting, and will be addressed at the October City Council Meeting.
Any questions? I move that we continue this matter until the October 3rd, 2022 meeting. Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor? Shows unanimous. Okay, the next matter is cooperative extension, and Valen Coit will come forward.
Thank you, Madam Chairman and the board. It's nice to see you again, and I'm here tonight to talk to you about the voluntary agricultural district, which is part of our statewide farmland preservation program. As you know, we have an ordinance that's been in place since 2001, and it's time to revise that ordinance. There are some state statute changes and various changes that we'd like to make to that ordinance, so you have that in your packet, and Mr. Starling has helped me with this, with the various changes, and also along with that, one part of that is that we will also have a new agricultural board, so that will be a seven-member board, that is different from the five-member board that the previous ordinance had. In addition to that, we have applied for a grant this year to replace signs. I'm sure as you travel around Sampson County, you've seen the voluntary agricultural district signs that are out there. They're a green color, and a lot of them have been very faded, so we're going to be replacing all those signs. We have a grant that will cover the cost of that as well. So I'm here to field any questions that you have. You have the materials in your packet.
Any questions? I move that we adopt the voluntary agricultural district ordinance as revised. Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor? Unanimous. I move that we appoint the VAD committee as recommended. Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor? And I move that we accept the Farmland Preservation Trust Fund grant funds and authorize execution of grant contract documents. Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor? Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Lynn Reynolds.
I'm David Ross. Welcome.
I've asked David Ross to make a presentation to the board tonight about project information. David's the key grant writer for the county, and he's done a great job. He's an engineer, but he's worked very hard to obtain grants for the county, and we've asked him just to apply for grants, matching funding. And he looks after our projects during the construction as well. I'd like to make a shout out to Ms. Letha Lee, who's helped and attended all of our community meetings for the announcements you're going to have tonight. We just had a second one at Mintz Community, had a big turnout, and had one at Herring Road Community, and had a big turnout there as well. So, with that, David?
Thank you, Lynn. Good afternoon, everybody. So I guess to start off with, the first agenda item is the new funding applications we plan to submit, and we've worked with the Public Works Department to identify some sources for financial assistance, and we found that the North Carolina Department of Environmental Quality, Division of Water Infrastructure, is the best route for us to take because they are administering the American Rescue Plan Act. And so we plan to apply for two funds, funding applications. The funding applications will be aborted on a point-based application system. The first funding application will be for the Mintz area, which Lynn just talked about, and the second will be for Sutton Town area. The maximum grant award amount per applicant for the American Rescue Plan is $15 million, and the funding applications that we will be submitting for each project will request grant only for these projects, and the total requesting funding amount will equal the maximum grant award of $15 million. And if the funding offer is made, additional and additional funds required. The county can determine at a time where they would like to apply for additional funding. Let's see. The two funding applications require a separate resolution to be adopted by the county, and I was going to give a brief description of each project, the first being the Mintz Area Water System Expansion. This project is to design and construct an expansion of the Sampson County public water system to incorporate the Mintz area to Sampson County. The purpose of this project would be to provide potable water surfaces to residents in the area. This project will have to have the following improvements: site preparation for a well, an elevated storage tank, backup generator for the site, associated electrical, and site piping, as well as water main extensions to connect the residences and water services, and meters and connections. This proposed infrastructure will provide water supply capacity, support the entire distribution system proposed at build-out for the project. And at this time, I would recommend Sampson County, in the form of a motion, approve the attached resolution required by the North Carolina Division of Water Infrastructure for the Mintz Area Water System Expansion project. Any questions?
Any questions? Do I hear a motion to adopt this resolution?
I make such a motion that we adopt this resolution.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor? Thank you.
Thank you. The second project would be for the Sutton Town area, and it is just going to be a distribution expansion project. There will be water main extensions and a booster pump station to help connect the residents in that area, and I'd like to note for both of these projects, in order to be, for these to apply and get this grant, we have to be providing services and connections to their people in this area, so actually paying for those connections. And right now, it is recommended that Sampson County, in the form of a motion, approve the attached resolution required by NCDQ for the Sutton Town area project. Is there any questions?
I think we have that all in one motion, so.
Okay.
Are we okay on that, Mr. Starling?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. All right, we'll move on to the wellhead protection.
Sounds good. So the wellhead protection plan, the county and Dewberry has been working together for this protection plan, and its goal is for the county to be able to monitor the water supply sources from contaminants in the area, and we worked with the state, and they have helped us identify wellhead protection area, and within that area, we went through and identified each public potential contaminant source within that radius, and for each groundwater supply well. So we have three wells currently, so there's three sites identified, and we looked at all the potential contaminant sources within each three. As part of this, the county will manage the wellhead protection area basically by putting out information like brochures and that kind of information to help educate the people within that area, and then every five years, do a relook at the area and make sure there hasn't been any new developments or anything like that that might be a potential contaminant. So I guess right now, we have to pass a resolution or to appoint Mr. Lynn Reynolds so that he can implement and make changes to the wellhead protection plan, and also approve the draft that we have, and so I recommend at this time that Sampson County do that.
Any questions? Do I hear a motion?
I move we adopt the resolution approving the wellhead.
Second. Second. All in favor? Shows unanimous. Thank you.
Okay, and want to give a quick update. Next two things are not actionable items, but wanted to give a quick update for the elevated storage tank bids. So we received bids on, I guess it was last Thursday, only two bids were received, and per the state requirements, three bids are required to open bids. So tomorrow, a readvertisement will be in the local newspaper, and it will put the new bid opening date to September 22nd, understanding that if we only have two bids or less than three bids for this one, we will open the bids at that time. And once bids have been reviewed and received, we'll work together with Joel to review the bids and make sure that we can give a recommendation to you all at the next Board of Commissioners meeting. Any questions about that?
We'll be taking no action on that until we get enough bids.
That's correct.
Okay.
And the last thing I wanted to do is give an update to a project that we applied for in the spring. So funding application was submitted in the spring of this year for the Ivanhoe area, and as many of you have heard, we received some information that we were awarded that project. This project was to provide potable water services to the residences in the area. As part of this project, the initial step would be to develop wells and elevate storage tanks in that area to help supply this water and support the system at build-out. It is anticipated that future projects may be required to help the additional residents connect onto this project. But on August 24th, 2020, a letter of intent to fund was received by the county. The letter stated that $13.283 million of funding for the American Rescue Plan was awarded to Sampson County. This funding was 100% grant for all eligible costs, so no loan on this. I'd give a special thanks to Ms. Letha Lee and the Public Works Department staff for their work on developing the application and outreach to public and state officials. And I think at this time, I was going to turn it over to Ms. Letha Lee.
If you don't mind, I think I'm going to stand right here. I want to thank everyone, including my partners, because without them, none of this would have been possible. We all worked together to get this done, to get the county water all over the county, to include Ivanhoe, and we are so grateful that it happened. After 20 years of our goal being to get water in Ivanhoe, we finally made it, and we're so grateful. And at this time, I'm going to ask Mr. DeVane if he'll come up and ex, words of thanks for the water in Ivanhoe, since he is a resident of Ivanhoe. I know everybody will want to say something.
Hi, my name is Russell Devane. I live at 715 G-Shaw Road in Ivanhoe, North Carolina, the big city of Ivanhoe, North Carolina, and I'm proud to live there. You know, my grandmother told me a long time ago, we started this project getting, trying to get water in Ivanhoe when Tank was a puppy. And I always asked Grandma, who in the world is Tank? And she said, by now, Russell, Tank is dead and gone. So we want to thank God, first of all, me being a resident of Ivanhoe, North Carolina, and I know that God put everybody in place. I'm not one that's going to call any names, nothing but the name of the Lord, like Commissioner Garland.
Amen, amen.
I'm not going to preach, but we thank God, because we've been working on it a long time, and on behalf of all the residents of Ivanhoe, we'd like to say we thank God for putting everybody in place. A lot of folks had their hands in it, and we thank God for putting everybody in place. And most of all, we thank God for every one of our county commissioners who worked so hard for Sampson County. To God be the glory.
All right. Thank you so much, Russ. We appreciate that. Okay, Ms. Roe Oats Mobley. Talk about Sampson Area Transportation.
Good afternoon. I am here to request permission to apply for three grants for FY24. An administrative grant in the amount of $285,000, has a local match of $42,750. A capital grant in the amount of $250,000, with a local match of $50,000. And a 5310 EdTAP and disabled grant, $40,000, that has a $20,000 in-kind match. And these grants are for FY24.
Questions? Give everybody a chance to, any questions? I move that we authorize submission of transportation grant application documents, including certifying resolution, which designates county manager as authorized official, and to schedule a public hearing on the funding for the 11/7/2022 meeting. Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Thank you.
Madam Chair, may I make a comment?
Yes.
You are very fortunate in that you've got a number of very good department heads in this county, and you're remiss to talk about one without talking about everybody. But however, Mrs. Roe Oats Mobley has just turned the world of transportation around for us since she has been here, and she operates and works so diligently and so smoothly and so seamless, and you just hardly know that they're there, and I think that's a credit to the quality of work that she does and the effort she gets from her staff, and just wanted to comment on that.
Thank you, and I agree. Great hire. I remember I was doing when she came. Now, I will turn it over to Vice Chair Kivitt for our appointments.
Okay. All right. All these ones? Okay, for the Workforce Development Board, I move that we approve Bartley, Warren, Chuck Spale, Jeff Nethercutt, and Hugh Carr, and also representing the Workforce Development Board, will be, and ex-official will be Amanda Bradshaw, Stephen Barrington, and Dr. David Goodwin, as well as Dr. Wesley Johnson. Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor? It's approved.
Okay, thank you. Vice Chair Kivitt. Has anyone, everyone looked at the consent agenda? Okay, I move that we approve the consent agenda as presented. Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor? Shows unanimous. Okay, we're down to our county manager's report.
Madam Chair, I've got two things. If you look at your board info, information on page 363, we have noted for you some additional funding that we have received through the state and our legislatures, legislators, and I think these people should be commended for their efforts, but as you can see, there's a million dollars, I'm not going to go everything, there's a million dollars for Sampson Community College to help them complete a project that they have received some other funding for. There's also a million dollars in here in one area for the sheriff's office to get body cameras, and there's also in another section, an additional $200,000. There's $50,000 for the Sampson County History Museum. There's $250,000 to help us with emergency management. You can see the asterisks, but we have, appears that we're going to now get new lighting for the ball fields at the Western District Park in Roseboro, and we have about $750,000 that we will be able to use for improvements at the animal sheltering, and a lot of these money, and there's $150,000 out there that has been directed for the Plainview Community Coalition, and in having it, we owe Senator Jackson a lot of gratitude, along with the representatives, but I think on the 150, I think Senator Bergen was also very instrumental in helping them get that money, and if I've left anybody up that needs recognition, help me, but that's extremely important. The other thing that I would point out to you is we do have the annual meeting with the Sampson Regional Medical Center on Monday, September 26th, at 6:00 PM, and that's usually a good occasion. I think this is another opportunity for us to have an in-person meeting. The third thing that I would like to call to your attention that we would like to do, we have been talking about putting a workshop together to be able to have some one-on-one time with the commissioners, and maybe have some in-depth conversations, and basically we would like to cover questions that people have on the budget, the general fund, and our financial status in general. We want to talk about human resources and some of the challenges we're having across the board there. In addition to that, we will be talking about trying to create context, make sure people have accurate information on a wide variety of subjects that they may be talking about. A lot of times, people are calling me and sharing with me information, and they're very sincere and good-hearted, but it's pretty apparent that a lot of times, people do not have all of the information that may be helpful as they come in and talk to us about some of the other challenges we have. So we hopefully, that meeting will be interactive and give the commissioners opportunity. Now, I think you will specify a workshop, this is between staff and the commissioners. The public is welcome to listen, but that will not be a public engagement type of meeting. We hope to be done in two hours, but we would like for you to allocate three hours, and if that is, if that is possible, we are suggesting Wednesday, September 21st, in this room, when you get to that point on the agenda, at 9:00.
I think that will be very, very helpful. At this time, we're moving on to the public comment period. Hold on, will you read, that's our.
Sure. Um. I'll go through this fairly briefly. As per the North Carolina General Statutes, we do, the board does reserve a period for comments from the public on topics not otherwise included in their evening's agenda. The board sets aside an amount of time for speakers typically. That has been three minutes when the person.
When the person comes up to the podium, we will start a timer for you. The light will turn green. When you have one minute left, it will turn yellow. And then when it, your time is over, it will turn red and a, a nice alarm will sound. And we do ask that the speaker conclude their remarks promptly and leave the lectern. You may not yield your time to another speaker and you may not sign up more than once. If you wish to give us materials, you may leave them on the podium and we, the clerk will collect them and give them to the board. If the time allows, those who fail to register before the meeting can be allowed to speak if they raise their hand at the conclusion. Speakers must be courteous in their language and presentation, shall not use profanity, racial slurs, and shall not engage in personal attacks that by irrelevance. Duration or tone may threaten or perceive to threaten the orderly and fair progress of the discussion. And if you fail to abide by those requirements, it, you may forfeit your right to speak. This is a forum for the board to listen to citizens. There should be no expectation that the board will answer impromptu questions. When you come up to the podium, please identify your name and address.
Thank you. The first one is Robert, another Sampson County name, G R A C Z Y K. Would you come forward for your three minutes?
It's Graezek.
Okay.
Hi, my name is Robert Graezek. I live at 2556 Greensbridge Road in Parkersburg, North Carolina. On August 17th, I submitted a FOIA request, a Freedom of Information Act request. And I've been to the office five times, asking the six specific questions and points. I thought Sampson County was transparent in their work activity within the county. I thought that transparency or integrity was part of Sampson County. Why would it take, since August 17th, this long to get a FOIA request provided to a taxpayer in the county? People have the right to know what goes on. There's no back door where people hide things. This is public record. I'm a taxpayer. It's we, the people. We, the people of Sampson County. I've heard comments that, well, just go out and vote. We are voting. We are voting. Thank you very much.
Thank you for your comments. The next, Latonya Gilliam. Would you come forward?
I would first and foremost like to thank and congratulate the citizens.
Could you give us your name and address?
Latonya Montgomery Gilliam, 817 West Second Street, Garland, North Carolina, 28441.
Okay, thank you.
I would first and foremost like to congratulate the citizens in Ivanhoe on their hard-won fight to bring public water to their community. Now the work begins. Basking in the success of receiving the funding grant is not an option. Now is the time to get door knockers and applications in, out and in the hands of the people. Having a tab on the website is not enough. Many elders cannot access the website to complete the online applications. Face-to-face interaction will be needed to get the water flowing into each and every eligible home. No one should be left out because they do not have internet or computer access. True leadership means beating your feet on the street in order to avoid a Lakewood repeat. The word is officially out that the NCDQ awarded Ivanhoe over $13 million to bring water into the homes, and everyone in Sampson County is watching and across the state, they are watching as well.
Thank you for your comments. Arlene McCoy.
My name is Arlene McCoy. I live at 319 Longview Lake Road, Garland, 28441. I was attached to the petition for the Ivanhoe residents, for the water. And the people that I represent want to know, when will they start putting in the lines? I'm a little different from Ivanhoe because I'm in the middle of Ingo and Garland, and both sites have a water tank there already. And the lines have been run at least halfway down, so it's not even 10 miles different from one place to the other or to where we stay at either. And if I could get some kind of clarification as to what they need to do or when this will come into effect. Thank you.
If you would call Public Works, Mr. Lynn Reynolds, staff will be able to help you with some of those questions. All right, thank you. Ruth Cantrell.
I'm Ruth Cantrell, 235 Gilmore Lane, Clinton. I'm here because I'm not sure if you guys realize that three more deputies have left since the middle of August. And I personally know one that's leaving the end of this year. And as a citizen of this county, I listen to the radio and I hear calls backed up. Just this past week, two deputies covered this entire county. I sincerely hope that y'all are going to think long and hard and do something to correct this. Two of the deputies went to Harlan County for a whole lot more money. And I've heard the rumors about many deputies are making over $70,000. Well, I can attest to you personally that the one that I live with and have lived with for 28 years does not even make half that. It is a crying shame how long response times have gotten because nobody wants to do the job when you can go work at Lowe's and make about the same amount of money. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments.
My name is Joe Stricklin. I live at 67 North Ingoth Avenue in Garland, North Carolina. And I'm here tonight to follow up on Ms. Cantrell's comments. I'm really disgusted that we have lost so many deputies in this county to other counties due to the lack of funding from the county manager and the board. We, as the citizens, demand better. We pay this money, this is our money, and we should be able to request that things be spent in a way that protects all the citizens of this county. In the last month, we had a drug addict event in our store in Garland, our little family dollar store, that required the call of a deputy. It took over 30 minutes to get anyone to respond to Garland while we've got four employees in there scared to death with somebody jumping over the counter, trying to break into the cash register. This is unacceptable, folks, completely. And then last night, I'm sitting in my living room as all of a sudden, I hear a kaboom. My wall shook and the pictures fell off of the wall from a drunk driver flying through Garland that took out the telephone pole that was as close to my front door as the wall. Every grandchild and my daughter were in this room. This is unacceptable. As a commissioner for the town of Garland, we have had to resort to hiring off-duty deputies, paying them more than we can actually afford to get some coverage in our area. And thank God, last night, one happened to be scheduled to be on duty. So within two minutes, less than two minutes, I had somebody at my door calling in all the support that we needed to protect my family and all the other families from the low-hanging wires that are, that were coming across Garland. Y'all can do better. We deserve better. We pay better. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. We do not have anyone else signed up to speak. Would anyone like to speak that has not signed up? If not, I move that we recess to reconvene on September 21st at 9:00 AM.
In this room.
In this room.
Second.
All in favor? Thank you.